Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Snapper?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Okay, first just a quick update on future agenda items. Next Monday, June 20th is Ward 2 Night and also a presentation on use of cable equipment funds and the Comcast franchise agreement. The following week, Monday the 27th and all week, there will be no city council meeting because most of the councils will be at the Maryland Municipal League Convention in Ocean City. The following week, Monday, is the 4th of July, so the city offices will be closed. The city council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 5th. And the main topic of that meeting is going to be a discussion regarding city council interaction with city committees. And you'll note that we have a tentative continuation of that discussion the following week on Monday, the 11th, if that is needed, following up on the council's desire to try and not have the gap between pieces of a discussion but to have enough time to have that discussion. And the next thing on the agenda is public comment period, and that is for anybody who'd like to make any comments on anything that is not on our regular meeting agenda. So if there's something on the work session agenda or anything that's not on the agenda at all, if you'd like to make your comments, and you can come to the podium, and we'll take Mr. Lovelace in the back first, and then anybody else who wants to speak can just go to the podium, and if you keep your comments to three minutes, and identify yourselves. Thank you. Mr. Lovelace?
My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, your favorite piece delegate. I want to ask you people at the city council, on the Ward night, it's like Ward 2 Night, could we put out voter registration packets and stuff out there for people to bring home to their friends and families and stuff if they're not registered to vote? Or if they're not registered to vote themselves, they can register to vote? Because I'd like to see a lot better voter turnout this year than we have in the past. I'd really like to see that. And also, I'm sure there are people turning 18 who have not got voter registration packets yet, and we've got to see if we can put them out on the tables on the Ward nights so that we can get the people at least conscious of the need to vote. Because before you know it, it's going to be election day, and we're going to wonder where everybody is when we get just a few people trickling in and out of the polls. I'd like to see a lot more responsibility going on, because that's the right of passage into adulthood. It's not whether you're going out and having a beer or going out and having a party or something. That's not the way to celebrate your passage into adulthood. One of the best ways to do it is you're finally reaching the age where you can vote. You know, voting is a responsibility we all must take. If we care about our neighborhood, we care about our city, we care about our country, we need to use our right to vote. And people may not know it, but the local elections are very, very important. We're electing our city council, we're electing our mayor, we're electing our school boards and other stuff, and that's very, very important to our city and our county and our country. Because that's where we start, you know? We can really become good activists that way. Tacoma Park has always been known for activism, and I'd like to see it stay that way. And one way to keep it that way and keep it conscious that way is the right to vote. And we shouldn't be putting voter registrations out there with the goodies on the Ward 4 Nights, Ward 5 Nights, Ward 2 Nights, whatever Ward Night we're out there. We need to get the consciousness out there of the need to get people registered to vote. If they have a kid turning 18, they should come out. And also, bring your kids out on Ward Nights, too. The schools should be asking the kids to come out and be represented out there. If they get problems in our neighborhoods like drugs and gangs, the kids should come out from their schools and let us know what we can do to help them, get a better education and stuff. You know, we should be able to bring the children out to help us on the Ward Nights, to let us know what we need to do to help them. Thank you very much. Remember, get out there and vote, V-O-T-E, and register to vote. Please, be active.
Thanks for your suggestion. Anybody else like to comment? Go ahead. Yep.
I'm Ann Becker. I'm the poet laureate, the current poet laureate of Tacoma Park, and I'll be outgoing at the end of June. And four years ago, I came to the city council meeting to get your support for my appointment. And I just want to tell you, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to serve Tacoma Park as its poet laureate. The support that the city council, the mayor, and the citizens of Tacoma Park have shown for the arts is really a wonderful thing, and I'm really glad that I had this opportunity to serve the community, to broaden the audience for poetry, to bring the work of Tacoma Park poets to other communities as well. And I'd also like to thank some people in the city government. There's Sarah Danes, who is a wonderful organizer and has always the go-to person for all the arts projects in Tacoma Park, and also her staff. I'd also like to thank Alvaro Calabria for his work on the TV that it means that our programs have gone, you know, actually all over the country. I know that people have seen them in Texas and various places, which is really wonderful. I'd also like to speak in support of the appointment of Muriel Lefler as the new poet laureate. I've known him for many, many, many years, and he's already, you've already seen his work around Tacoma Park. One of the things that he's responsible for are the beautiful posters that are put up every year. But also, over the pretty much 40 years that I've known him, he's been an important member of the whole Washington area poetry community, and has acted as mentor for many, many poets and is a wonderful organizer himself. And so I'm sure that he'll do a wonderful job as the new poet laureate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your kind words. Yes?
Before you leave, before you sit back down, put in context our support of poetry with other communities around here or in other places. Could you go back so that we can all hear? I'm trying to get a sense of where we sit.
Well, let me tell you one thing that'll give you an idea of where Tacoma Park sits. I was invited in April, which is National Poetry Month, to come to the Smithsonian Natural History Museum to do a workshop in the Ocean Hall, a haiku workshop, using the observations from everything that was in the Ocean Hall. And when I asked Catherine Sutera, who invited me, "Well, how did you find me? I just got an email out of the blue." I'd never heard of her before. She said, "Oh, yes, well, I was talking, and somebody said, 'The person you need to get is the poet laureate of Tacoma Park.'" They didn't say Ann Becker. They said the poet laureate of Tacoma Park. So there are a couple of things. One is that we have a monthly reading series that was started by the first poet laureate of Tacoma Park and has been continued by Martin Fitzgerald every month since then. And, you know, the actual cities that have a monthly poetry series here, they don't. They don't. I mean, I know. Also, I've been doing a lot of programs. I do a free poetry workshop, free community poetry workshop, once a month, and that actually will continue, just as Don Berger's reading series continued. That will continue once I've gone. The poet laureate also writes a monthly column in the Tacoma Voice, which goes to Tacoma Park residents and also goes to Silver Spring in a large area. A lot of people see that. And we've, there's nothing else like the Spring for Poetry. No one else has these wonderful poetry posters. There's nowhere else in the Washington area that has that. There's a, once a year, the library, the Friends of the Tacoma Park Library, has a special event called Favorite Poetry Evening, and people bring poems to read to everyone else that have meant a lot to them in their lives in this past year. The children's, we've been having, the children's library room was totally packed, and there were people of all ages. There were children, there were adults, there were seniors, and everybody had wonderful poems to share. I've done a number of collaboration projects, which have been exhibitions of collaborations between poets and visual artists. We've had two of those here, one that then traveled also to a space in Silver Spring. And we've had, as part of those, we've had performances with poets and musicians and dancers. And now, my latest and last project is to do, I've been running something I call Collaboration Laboratory for poets, dancers, and musicians to, just to see how we can work together. And out of our work, we'll be having a performance on the 17th, this Friday night, here in the auditorium. So those are the kinds of things that we've been doing.
Thanks so much for making us more aware of those kinds of things, and thank you for serving.
Yeah. It's been my great pleasure. This is a wonderful community, and it's a wonderful community to serve. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Laura Barclay, and I am the volunteer with the Tacoma Business Association, and I just wanted to officially invite the mayor and the council members to the opening of the Recycle Art of Bike exhibit that is opening at Tacoma Park on Saturday, June 18th, at 10:00 a.m. at B.Y. Morrison Park at the Junction. You probably know, but Recycle is a public art exhibit that I organized to celebrate the bicycling and recycling and art culture of Tacoma Park, and we commissioned artists to create sculptures made out of bicycle parts, five of which are installed already, which you might have passed while driving along Carroll Avenue. And the remaining two will be up this week, and we'll have an official unveiling on Saturday. So I wanted to extend the invitation officially to all of you to attend.
Is the xylophone one in front of the Tacoma bicycles, is that one of them?
It is. That's by Jim Caldwell, who also did the mural at the Junction.
I like that.
Yeah, and did you see that giant one at the Junction with all the wheels?
I liked that.
Yeah, so I'm excited, and we'll have them up until October, and then we'll, hopefully they'll still be in one piece, and we'll be able to auction them off at the street festival and use the funds to hopefully do this Recycle 2012, so, thank you.
Sounds wonderful.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I'll miss it.
I know, me too.
Back to poetry. For a moment. I think I should introduce myself. My name is Muriel Lefler, and I've been nominated by committee and the Arts and Humanities Commission to be poet laureate of Tacoma Park, which I feel is truly a great honor. I've lived in Tacoma Park since 1977 and on Sherman Avenue since 1979. I was the unofficial poet laureate of Sherman Avenue, outnumbered side of the street, so I look forward to, if the council approves, taking on a larger role. Hearing Ann Becker speak about all that, you know, Don Berger and she especially has done over the last four years, it's pretty remarkable, and she has brought many, many people together. I know you have a long meeting in front of you, so I won't go on, I won't give a talk about poetry, but I will give you a poem, since after all, we have, this is about poetry. And I'm going to read you a poem of mine. It's called "Take Hold," and I think if there's anything that is an aesthetic of mine.
Mayor, would you raise the thing?
Is this better?
And then the whole gizmo?
Left finger. Oh.
And that'll, I think, I heard a little feedback going on. I think that might help them.
Is that better?
And then you're a tall guy, so that's.
Yeah, right, okay. So this poem is called "Take Hold." "If there's nothing before you, take hold of it. You may be fortunate or not. Place it deep in your pocket regardless. It is a possession as no other. When you are to leave and have made all your preparations, when you are ordered to declare all your possessions, reach into the dark pocket. This is no symbol, traveler, no parable. Nothing is as whole as the space in the air you pass through, and it is yours if you will take hold of it." And I hope to be able to take hold of things and add to the many achievements that Ann and Don before have, but again, Ann especially, has done over these last four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to it. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Snapper?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the praise for the poetry efforts in Tacoma Park. I have heard many, many times, and just again this weekend, I had out-of-town visitors who we were, I was sort of showcasing Tacoma Park, we were walking around and so on, and they noticed the Recycle Art exhibit, they noticed the art on the walls, and especially the poetry. We had to stop at all of the framed poetry that we saw around Tacoma Park, and I just, it was just oohs and ahs, both for the idea of having poetry around Tacoma Park and the actual poetry itself. So I just want to share the continual and frequent appreciation for the work that the poet laureate has done, and all of you have done, not just Ann, but the others as well.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'll also give kudos, and one of the things that I remember is the poetry in the bathrooms that took place in all of the, in many of the commercial buildings in town. I thought that was very clever. What a great idea. I guess, for those of you in my ward who haven't, who weren't aware of an email that I sent out over the weekend saying that I would not run for reelection, I'm just going to mention that briefly now. It's been, it's been a great experience for the last three and a half years, and I look forward to serving until November, after the election in November, and I encourage anyone in the ward who wants to run to run. It's a great place to be. I'm glad to talk to anybody about it, and as Pat likes to say, it's a democracy, so.
Councilmember Clay?
Thank you. Well, we had a, we had a great weekend this weekend, and one of the things that we were able to do was the Tacoma Park Folk Festival Pub Crawl, and everyone had a great time. We sold out all of our cups and made over $1,500 for the pub crawl, and people were talking, out on the street, and they were talking about the bicycle art, and they were talking about the poetry and what a fun place it is. And a lot of people that hadn't been into Tacoma Park before actually came in for the pub crawl, so that was, that was very nice. We had a couple of our, we've gone through a couple of sidewalk meetings now for the Saskia neighborhood, and putting out more information about the sidewalk process, which is very good. And the last thing I wanted to say is that it's summertime, and the kids get out of school half-day on Thursday, and they're out on Friday, and then summer's around, and the kids are in the streets. And I just want to remind everybody to remember that. The kids are, the kids are out playing, the days are longer, and keep your eye out and watch out for the kids.
And the official first day of summer is still eight days away.
It is, but for my kids, they're planning Thursday at noon. Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Tacoma Park has so much talent, it's just incredible, and I thank you for your year of service as poet laureate, and look forward to seeing Muriel take this and shape it into something new in the coming year. I saw the bicycle art, some of that, up in Tacoma Junction today. Also had the pleasure of joining Mayor Williams and some of the other council members at the metro station to see the unveiling of the new artwork up there at the Metro, the mosaic that was crafted by Sam Gilliam. Beautiful work. And I just continually amazed at the many talents that we have here in the residents of Tacoma Park, and many of those in the arts. I'm sorry to hear Councilmember Robinson's decision that he's not going to run for reelection this year. I think it's, it reminds me that, you know, I heard Newt Gingrich today on the. Oh, yeah. Dan and Newt Gingrich in the same sentence. So it is the election year, and I think it's fair for politicians to let the community know, and especially their constituents, know what their plans are or are not for the election season. So I would just like to announce today that I will not be running for president this year. I thank you. Sorry to disappoint anyone.
Councilmember Schultz?
I guess I, too, would like to comment on the dedication of the artwork at the Tacoma metro stop, which I was pleased to be able to participate in. I guess it was Saturday. I don't know. I lose track of time these days. I just encourage you to go down and take a look at this piece of artwork, because after all the speech-making from the mayor of Washington, D.C., and Muriel Bowser from Ward 4, the head of the metro, Mr. Salz, and a number of other people, you realize that an awful lot of people worked for a very long time to allow, to enable this artist to be able to create this work by this gentleman by the name of Sam Gilliam, who lives in the Tacoma section of Washington, D.C. Just, go down there and look at it. It's very large, but I found it to be just fascinating and breathtaking, because the more you look at it, the more you see, as in any great work of art. It's not something you just walk by and say, "Oh, another abstraction." It's something that pulls you into it. It's extremely colorful, and I think we are really, really blessed to have something as beautiful as that on the doorstep of our community. I'd also encourage people, changing the subject, to remember every Wednesday at 2:30 throughout the summer and into the fall, into October, that little bell should go off that maybe ought to be over in the Crossroads area of Tacoma Park to participate and enjoy the offerings of the Crossroads Farmers Market. It's now, in its fifth year, I believe. Fourth? Fifth, I think. Anyway, it's growing. Fifth year, thank you. With more vendors each year, becoming a lot more sophisticated, and a delightful, really delightful array of great food out there. I'm not saying necessarily that you're going to find prices there that are going to beat one of the supermarkets hands down, but just as with any farmer's market, you know you're going to get a quality of food that you're just not going to find in a large supermarket. It needs your support. It's been doing very well, and I encourage you to go over there. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright is joining us during this meeting on the telephone. Do you have any comments?
I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to serve with Councilmember Robinson. I'm sorry to hear that he is not running for reelection, and I'm optimistic that some of the wonderful persons from Tacoma Park will, or many people will, will run for that. And I look forward to continuing to work with Ann over the coming months.
Thanks, Josh.
And I just have a brief comment or two. One thing I wanted to do was just follow up on some of my colleagues' comments on the Tacoma Metro dedication of the public art, and the name of it is "From a Model to a Rainbow." And Sam Gilliam talked about when he was down there looking at the space and thinking about what to do, that there was actually a rainbow that came over the building, and that was part of what inspired him. And I also wanted to thank, among the many people who put a lot of time and effort into that, Dan Turbit, who I think was the, kind of the organizer and the main founder of the idea. He's a resident of Tacoma, D.C., and I had the opportunity after the ceremony to go back to his house with many other people and get to talk to a lot of the people who were so crucial in making that happen, and to thank all of them on behalf of Tacoma Park for the wonderful effort there. I will note that it would be awfully nice to have the budget that the district has for public art. The budget on that project was $250,000. We could do an awful lot with $250,000. I'll also just note that I and a couple other colleagues from the council attended the annual police awards ceremony on Friday night, and that was an opportunity to honor the many men and women who provide outstanding service to this community throughout the year as part of the police department, and there were a lot of people who were honored for a lot of very important work, and we heard a lot of the details about that in the awards ceremony, and the, both the sworn staff and the civilian staff really put in a terrific effort and were honored on Friday night. We'll now move to the C manager's comments.
Just two brief items this evening. As the council was aware, the state retirement system had asked for the Attorney General's office to review some of the outstanding issues relative to the participation of elected officials in the city, as well as an appointed official, specifically myself. Did hear back from them last week, and basically they did agree that I was exempt from participation because I participated in an alternative pension plan, and they have reviewed all the issues and said that the original independent auditors report relative to the council participation stands, which means that we will be making retroactive contributions on behalf of six of the seven current sitting council members, and we will be getting with each of you about the amount that each of you will owe. Karen Hampton, our human resources manager, at my request, is basically refining the preliminary projections she had done during the budget process, and will be basically getting those reviewed by the state retirement system. What I will try to do later this week is at least give each of the six of you, with Councilmember Seaman being the exception because of his continuous service since prior to the law going into effect, what we estimate each of you will owe. And Councilmember Robinson, in light of your announcement that you will not be seeking reelection, if you would like, I can certainly touch base with the state retirement system, because right now, as it would stand, you would be contributing probably several thousand dollars but would not vest. So essentially, it would be having to put the money in and then, you know, take it out, because you would not be vested. So if you'd like, I can certainly pursue that issue with them to see if that's necessary or not.
Please do.
Okay, be happy to. The second item I just wanted to mention is just an update on the public works renovation. As everyone knows, we did have a very wet spring, and the schedule has slid somewhat right now. The latest information I have is that the project would be done towards the end of August. All the parties are basically reviewing the schedule to see if we can pick up some of that time that was lost. But the schedule as it stands right now would have us be finishing up in late August as opposed to early August, as was originally envisioned, so.
Councilmember Snapper, you have a question?
Yeah, about the state retirement issue, are we, what I can't remember is, do we participate? Did we get the retroactive vesting year so we're under the old rules?
Right. What I had asked is if it would be possible for both the city as well as the individual elected officials, basically, particularly the council, to give you some time, because it's not an insignificant amount of money for each of you. They indicated that would be acceptable, that to do that retroactively in the new fiscal year, we still need to sort of work out kind of the timeframe for that, but you will fall under the old vesting schedule, which is five years as opposed to the new schedule that goes into effect July 1st, 2011. schedule that goes into effect July 1st, 2011. It is tied to your entry into the plan and your data participation, which is why, even though it would be retroactive, you would still get those past service year credits. That's it, unless there's questions about anything.
Thank you. Any legislative update? I guess we're going to cover that later. And we don't have any minutes to adopt, so we will move to the public hearing. And this is a public hearing on amending the Tacoma Park City Charter, Article 2, Section 202, a description of corporate boundaries. And Deputy City Manager is going to walk us through this one.
Yes, it's very simple. The Tacoma Park City Council already annexed a portion of Flower Avenue right of way by adopting Resolution 201070 on March 28th, 2011. The annexation was effective in May, and the boundary description of the city of Tacoma Park now needs to be altered within the charter. And so it's basically cleaning up the charter to reflect the annexation that's already taken place. I noticed that there weren't anyone, no one had signed up to speak, but there may be others here.
Is there anybody who would like to speak at the public hearing on the charter amendment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And so we have a number of steps to follow on this, and we will continue down this path to make these changes. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee, and they have an interim report for us, and I guess...
Do you want to do a presentation?
Presentation tag team if you need to, and you'll give us a presentation, then we can have some discussion.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the progress of the committee since we were formed. I am going to basically summarize a written report that we've provided to you.
Did you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. My name is Ann Hollander. I'm in Ward 5, and I'm co-chair of the committee with David Paris.
We knew that, but we wanted to make sure that everybody knew.
Oh, okay. We have a number of other members of the committee here as well.
You want to introduce the committee members who are here?
You guys each introduce yourselves.
Hi. Dr. Troy Jacobs. I'm from Ward 5.
I'm David Paris. I'm co-chair.
But that's just Ward 2. Jackie, can you listen to what I'm talking about?
Thanks, you're welcome.
Okay. We have a fairly detailed report that you guys have received sometime today, and because of the detail, I am not able to really present it extemporaneously, so I'm going to track the report, but try to summarize as much as possible. So in response to our charge by the city council, we've met with a variety of resources since our first meeting in June 30th, 2010. We've had conversations with Washington Adventist Hospital and the Adventist University to learn more about anticipated redevelopment of the hospital's campus and the planning process. We reviewed plans presented by Washington Adventist Hospital and the university for a proposed Village of Health and Wellness, which we're calling the Wellness Village, and an adjacent health and fitness center planned for Flower Avenue on the Wawa campus near the proposed Wellness Village. The committee also received a lot of information from the Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission concerning the special exception permitting process and stormwater remediation considerations as applied to the Washington Adventist Hospital site and any reuse or development plans for that site. As part of the process, we have continued to monitor the Washington Adventist Hospital Certificate of Need process, because we believe there's an inexorable link between the certificate of need process, the relocation of the hospital, and then the residual uses of the hospital site. So we have followed that with much interest, as it's been evolving over the past year or so. We've had lively discussions about the move from Tacoma Park that's planned by the hospital, and we discussed various avenues for community outreach, transportation issues, and environmental issues related to the site. Interestingly, we brainstormed about the possibility of conducting an architectural competition that might generate creative ideas about the best use of the site, and recently posed a question to the hospital to see if they would participate in that type of activity, and they've stated that they were, that they believed the best use of the site was this Wellness Village, but they did not oppose brainstorming with the community. And so we believe that that's a promising avenue for the committee, the council, and the city to consider pursuing. And so on June 6th, our committee unanimously voted to request your support of that effort and would like to request a prize pool of $5,000 to support that effort. I can describe it in greater detail later, but it's been the subject of a bit of conversation in the committee, and we believe that it would enable the city to take a proactive role in the potential reuse of that site. So the committee would particularly like to commend Sarah Daines and Alana Blanchard, who are our staff liaisons to the committee, because they've provided invaluable service to the committee, and they're public servants in the best sense of the word and words, and really exceptional resources for our committee and the city. As you see in the written report, we've discussed a whole range of issues. They've been, at times, very controversial and thought-provoking. To their credit, the representatives of the hospital have been very generous in discussing their preliminary plans for the Wellness Village with our committee, and the committee recognizes that the hospital's plans are evolving, and we appreciate the information that the hospital has shared with us. However, as details about the plans have evolved, the committee has become increasingly concerned about the overall viability of the Wellness Village concept. If the Wellness Village is not to become a proverbial Potemkin village, the hospital needs to dispel the appearance that the advancement of the village is just a tactic designed to address concerns expressed by the Tacoma Park community and Holy Cross Hospital. This means that the hospital must commit the resources required to create a sustainable urgent care facility and present all of the required essential elements of a viable business and medical plans in an open forum with the community. Really has not been done to date, and is a source of a lot of frustration in the community and in our committee. The public, including the city and our committee, have been provided with very scant site documentation, financial and business plans, that make a meaningful review of the viability of the Wellness Village very difficult to assess. Our committee is concerned about the implications for the citizens of Tacoma Park if the hospital's role is reduced to serving as a landlord of a village medical arts building, which we believe the current plans are evolving or devolving into that specter actually happening. Our committee fears that the Wellness Village might be intended to serve as a temporary placeholder for a future development project that the Adventist healthcare organizations might pursue in the future at an expedient time. Our committee fully supports the efforts of the Tacoma Park government to require Wawa to include viable plans for the proposed Wellness Village within the terms of the certificate of need for the White Oak facility. Recently, the hospital has presented plans for the Mary Center, which is an established nonprofit organization, to take over the urgent care function planned for the site. Originally, they had planned a relatively small presence in the doctor's condominium office building on the hospital site, but more recently, it's been proposed that they might take over the entire function, as we understand it, of the planned urgent care The committee and the community at large have not seen any information about the proposed Mary Center budget, staffing information, operating hours, medical plan, or services to be offered. The committee believes that the council should continue to closely monitor the Mary Center relationship with the hospital and the Wellness Village and the financial viability of the plan, because of the significant Tacoma Park interests at stake in the event that the Mary Center becomes a primary provider of urgent healthcare services on the Tacoma Park site. We view as a cautionary sign the closing of the pharmacy on the hospital property. The closure of the family pharmacy provides some discomforting insight into the hospital's ability to handle transition smoothly and in concert with the Tacoma Park community. In June 2009, one of our committee members brought to our attention the hospital's abrupt closure of the pharmacy that was located on the hospital grounds to the committee. It was reported that the pharmacy was closed on a Friday without the provision of advance notice to protect the pharmacy patrons. The hospital apparently made no provision to provide continuity of services for the patrons with prescriptions on file, including customers who had prescriptions waiting to be picked up. The member of our committee was among the abandoned customers who had to scramble to contact her doctor and arrange for a prescription to be called into another pharmacy. The provision of medical services at the nearby Wellness Village will be important to transit-dependent Tacoma Park residents and persons daunted by traffic and transit delays associated with the three-and-a-half-mile drive from Tacoma Park to Holy Cross and the 6.6-mile drive from Tacoma Park to White Oak. The committee urges the council to continue seeking expansion of the scope of medical services available at the village and to expand the hospital's commitment to provide limited shuttle service, bus service, between the Tacoma Park Village and the White Oak site. If those two campuses are truly to interact with each other seamlessly, we have to address the transportation concerns, because there's not a clear link between the two sites, and those people that are dependent on public transportation are really not going to be effectively able to use that site without using a taxicab or an ambulance. That's just the bottom line. There's a lot more detail on the transportation issues that one of our members has prepared, and I urge you to take a close look at that, because if you think about the pragmatic realities of the interface between the Tacoma Park site and the planned White Oak site, you can see that it's really not, it's very difficult to see those two campuses functioning together in a way that Tacoma Park residents would be able to easily utilize. There's a huge issue that we've identified concerning stormwater management concerns, and it's very difficult to provide you with any accurate information, because the costs of stormwater remediation on the site that we've been quoted are vastly different. The hospital has quoted a very low figure. We've gotten preliminary estimates from county and state government resources that are many multiples of the amount that the hospital has been advancing. And even at the level that the hospital has been describing, they have made vague allusions to the fact that they would need to seek some kind of government grant funding to cover both capital and operating expenses of the remediation. So it's a big question mark. It hasn't been very clearly addressed, and it's something that we're going to continue to monitor. There's, again, a lot more information about what led us to propose the architectural competition. It's kind of an interesting site, because it's semi-urban, and there's a lot of potential for green architecture and other innovative ideas that could be applied to the site. And we'd really like to see some positive conversation in the community that's driven by community-based, sort of out-of-the-box resources, rather than driven by the hospital's interest in pursuing its current certificate of need and, you know, reuse of the site. We recognize that they own it. They have a great plan that seems to coalesce well with both our committee and predecessor committee's review of the site, but we'd like to see some interesting creative thinking about what could actually occur on that site. So the hospital continues to advocate that the Wellness Village is the most appropriate long-term use for the site. The Wellness Village is a relatively low-impact land-use solution, and overall, the amount of traffic vehicular and otherwise would be significantly less on the hospital's campus. That being said, the capital expenditures planned for that site are extraordinarily low. We've consulted with a number of land-use experts, real estate experts, construction contractors, and the dollar figure that they're talking about for rehabilitation of the site really is not a significant rehab of a major facility like that. It really is looking to us as if it's a placeholder, some kind of minor fix-up, and it's hard for us to envision the financial viability of that site. So the committee agrees that the Wellness Village is a concept that addresses vital concerns raised by the community about the relocation of an essential healthcare partner and neighbor, and the community is, it has served for over 100 years. However, the concept must become a reality, and that's the conundrum that our committee continues to address. Our committee is concerned about the viability of the Wellness Village, and we think it's threatened by the possibility that the proposed Mary Center might not be embraced by the entire community, and the increasing disengagement of the hospital and the Adventist Healthcare Center from directly providing general health services in the Wellness Village. There's also incomplete medical, environmental, transportation, and business plans, and all of those are issues that we're continuing to monitor, and we're available to discuss any questions you might have. We also have another issue that I'd like to bring to your attention, because it's been a source of a lot of consternation in our committee, and that is, we looked over the council's agendas for the past number of years, because we were frankly surprised when the council issued its recent letter in support of the hospital's certificate of need. And what we found, that I believe is supported by the staff's review, is that there really has not been much, if any, open conversation in public session about the relocation of the hospital and the residual uses of the site. While I understand that the council has had a lot of legal advice, and there's potential litigation, that's all legitimate to be discussed in closed session, surely there was a lot of policy discussion that must have occurred in this closed session that this committee really believes should have been brought before the public. And we would really encourage you to consider in the future bifurcating those discussions, opening up your policy discussions to general public comment, because we really did feel as though much of this was done behind closed doors. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss that with you as well.
Sure. Thanks for expressing that concern. I'll say that my reaction is that, I would say that there was not much policy discussion behind closed doors. I think the extent of the discussion was pretty much the legal aspects of it. I'm not sure I could characterize how often we talked about it, but I think it was not, we did not put a huge amount of time into talking about it. It was mostly in terms of the certificate of need process and the opportunities for how we might participate in that process and the legal aspects of that.
Well, I understand that, but frankly, the open meetings and sunshine laws are very strictly construed in the state. I've done a lot of legal research on this. I'm a trained attorney, and I work in municipal law. And the reality is that the lawyer's advice can be really narrowly tailored to the specific legal advice and the remainder of it, even if the attorney is acting as a business agent, really should be open to the public, because the business aspects, the policy aspects are things that really are subject to the open meeting laws.
I agree.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything in particular I missed, or what else?
Just one thing. So my name is Jackie Davidson, and I reside at Victory Tower, and I represent the seniors and our interests. And I just want to bring your attention to the transportation issue. I was very interested in the Lane Consulting Report, and she identifies the number of emergency visits to the Washington Adventist Hospital, and our ZIP code 20912 had over half of the 10,000 emergency room visits. So we seniors are very concerned about the transportation... So we seniors are very concerned about the transportation issues that will be entailed to use the White Oak facilities, and I'm very much afraid that we will probably use Holy Cross or the Washington Hospital Center. It's really burdensome, and a lot of our seniors have primary physicians or specialists at the Washington Adventist Hospital, and I've heard concerns expressed that they really don't know, you know, how they're going to access these specialists if they move to White Oak. So that's my, I'm expressing my concern, our concern for, on behalf of the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi. Vanessa Dixon, Ward 2. I just wanted to add, there were some individual differences of opinion. I think the consensus of the committee was appropriately stated, but there were some individual differences of opinion in terms of not only the viability, the potential viability of the Wellness Village, but also the appropriateness, the appropriate level of services. I think it was spoken to very well last, I think it was last week, by Councilmember Clay, who talked about what her constituents, which I happen to be one, have expressed a desire to see, which is really the very highest level of quality health care that we can have in the absence of a full-service hospital. It is a really traumatic and terrible loss to a community to lose a full-service hospital. I think sometimes there's an underestimation of what it means to have that level of health, that level of health care so close to us. I know that when we moved here, week one, eight years ago, my mom fell trying to reach the ceiling for some reason. She fell, she broke her ribs, rushed her five minutes down Sycamore Creek Parkway to the hospital. My son's been several times. I've been once or twice. A neighbor who was in distress, I scooped him up, put him in my car, I took him to the hospital. Traffic density in terms of reaching the level of health care that we need when we need it is a big issue, and I think to some extent perhaps that's being underestimated in general. I think there are also individual opinions on the committee in terms of the quality of health care that's available at the hospital. There's some people who say, "Let the hospital go. I really don't like it anyway." And there are people like me who say it's access to quality health care, a very short distance away from home, minutes equal matter. It matters how many minutes it takes to get to that level of health care. I think that Tacoma Park, this is my opinion, is a less desirable place to live without a full-service hospital. And so I reiterate the statement that I made last week at this council meeting, which is that, given the legacy of health care in this city, going back, I think, very far, others can speak to it much better than I can, that the hospital has a particular responsibility to leave and to ensure, to guarantee, to provide all the details that are needed so that we have the highest level of access to quality health care that can be provided in their probable potential absence from this community.
A couple of my colleagues have some questions or comments. Before I go to them, I just, I do want to return to the point for a minute that Ms. Hollander made about the legal advice in closed session and the open-meetings law. I appreciate the concern, and I do want to let you know that we hear you in making that observation, and we will certainly make, we will continue to make sure that we only discuss in closed session that which we are allowed to under the open-meetings law. I would characterize our approach to it as vigilant. We always try and make sure, and we have many checks and balances for the types of topics that we take up, the times that we go into closed session as opposed to an open session. And the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk, and the members of the council all regularly kind of ask that question of ourselves going into a session and in the middle of a session, and there are times when we say, "Oh, we can't talk about that because it's policy. That's not under the format of this closed session." So I hear the concern, and just want to let you know that we will continue to be vigilant about that.
Can I address it one more second?
Sure.
So I guess the reality is, though, when you issue a letter that represents the city's position on the relocation of a major institution in the city, and then when you pass a resolution following a very brief public session where the resolution was completely fleshed out in essentially final form with one minor change, it just begs the question because obviously, policy had to be involved in a discussion of, you know, how you were going to act on those matters, and there was really, there's no record of a public session in which these issues or the formulation of your policy was discussed in open session. So again, we just reiterate the concern and appreciate your vigilance.
Thanks. Councilmember Clay.
I'd like to thank everybody for serving on the committee and also remind folks that you can always connect with any of the council members, but especially, you know, I would hope that people from Ward 2 would call me if there's something happening on the committee that they want to communicate or want to have someone advocate to get something on the agenda. I had to fight for a long time just to get the appointment process on the agenda so that we could get the people appointed to the land use committee. We had appointed the health care committee first, and it was a real struggle, actually, that I engaged in for a significant amount of time, I think, to get the, get the land use committee appointed because I think it's really key and critical, and you guys have lots of great content in your report, and I really appreciate it, and have, you know, continued to learn things about the hospital and the process all the time. I want to start with the competition piece and then move into some of the other substance pieces. I'm really, I'm interested in the competition idea. One of the things that I had said to the hospital initially is that I wanted them to go out to the community to do a community plan, and they didn't do that. They went internal, which I have talked to them about several times in public also. But, so I'm interested in the competition, but I'm also interested in, you know, an educated, or a process that engages the community in a more educated way instead of just sort of the wishless fantasy way. And so that when people are talking about what's a reuse plan for the hospital if the hospital moves or based on what's left behind on the site, that they understand the whole universe of activities around that, including the environmental impacts and the traffic impacts, and what are the tax ramifications of that, you know, what is the cost to the community in these other ways, and as well as, as the sort of the basic programming of, you know, because there's a big difference between putting housing on the site and a nonprofit village and these different things related to all of those other aspects that I don't think got considered in the kind of wishless process that they went through. So I would be interested in both of those things, both more active planning that educates the people in the process about what these trade-offs mean and the design competition. I got my master's degree at Berkeley at the College of Environmental Design, and I was not a designer, but I was around all the designers all the time, and I'll tell you that they live on sugar and caffeine. And they, you know, and they take these ideas and they come up with all sorts of interesting ways to use property and to integrate different things of the design that I think could actually be really helpful to the community so that if the hospital goes, there, you know, there are different concepts to put out there about what happens at the site and, you know, how would people integrate the kinds of needs and issues that our community has into that kind of a site. And they understand all of the things about, you know, what the costs are and what the income generation is. So I would, I would be interested in hearing, hearing more about that. I appreciate a lot of the things that are in here are very interesting information. Just for perspective, as I understand it, the expenditure for rehabilitation is about equivalent to a month's rent in the site. Is that about right? Because the rental is about $35 per square foot, and you've got listed the rehab at $31.58 to $39.02 per square foot. So I rented a house in Tacoma Park for $1,130 a month. So imagine what an $1,130 rehab would look like on a two-bedroom apartment. Is that a reasonable?
Well, again, we've consulted with a number of experts on this issue. I don't have a figure for a full-blown rehab of a property of that size. Also recognize that a commercial rehab is going to be substantially different than a residential rehab.
Sure.
But, I mean, using it as an analogy, I think it's fair enough that, you know, the information we got is that it would be the whitest cosmetic rehab that you might imagine. They're talking about tearing down a substantial portion of the building, that's the oldest portion of the building, I believe. There's asbestos in there. I don't know if there's asbestos remediation costs involved. It's difficult to assess because, again, the committee's been given and the community very scant financial information, only the broadest brush, and so it's hard to provide accurate information to you just because we just don't have an accurate business plan. The per-square-foot rents and rehab costs, I mean, universally have been described as extremely low, not a serious rehab effort.
So a couple more comments. So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to better understand the relationship between what the freestanding emergency center needs are space-wise and money-wise and what the income generation is for the rest of the site. You know, I've seen the things about the dialysis center and things like that, and then, you know, I think the Mary Center there is sort of a hobbled-together solution to kind of meet the needs. So I'd like ultimately, I would like to get more information about that. And I'd also like to hear anything else you have to say about the idea of this being a placeholder until a future use. So if I can sort of read between the lines, the, there's a business plan that's at least not fleshed out, and I won't say it's not viable, let's say it's not fleshed out enough to be able to determine whether or not it's viable. So then, you know, if this gets put into place and then it just, it becomes its own separate entity and essentially collapses under its own weight, and, you know, what, there's $94 million and there's a lot, the debt's all being, essentially, the debt's all being left behind at the Tacoma Park property while the hospital that has flourished based on those investments has moved to White Oak. So this, it's sort of a designed failure in that sense. So what is it that you think, is there some indication that there's something that they're thinking about doing with the property? Because I was actually surprised, what Jerry Sock said to me is that our objective is that in five years, we, the day that we open the doors at the White Oak facility, the bulldozers come here and, you know, level the place, and then we sell it for $16 million for housing and pay off the construction loans on the other place, and it's clearly not what we're hearing currently.
Well, the hospital has continually reiterated to the committee, and I believe the community, that they want the residual uses to be self-sustaining. That necessarily means they need a lot of significant amount of revenue generating activity going on on the site. And we just haven't seen plans that indicate to us that that is going to be happening. A lot, a significant part of the site now is being devoted to the relocation of Adventist administrative offices to the site. There's portions of the site that are, you know, clearly for-profit generating health care uses, the dialysis center. What are my thoughts? Can you address that?
Troy Jacobs, for everyone in the audience there. You know, Councilmember Clay, I agree with you. When we were trying to go through, and we should be able to look at what their plans are and what they've described and be able to match it up. And as a physician, I struggled to understand what parts of what their plan actually entail. And that's a little bit concerning because I think that they can be more explicit, and there are various reasons why they may not at this point, but I think it's certainly reasonable for us to ask them to provide us with more detail so that we can actually be able to line up and say, "This is the part of the, that's going to be used for dialysis. This is going to be," well, there's parts of the plan that it's not even clear to me what it entails, like integrative health. That could be a number of different things. It sounds very nice, but I would like to know what actually is there. Is that going to be acupuncture? Is that going to be, you know, primary health care? I mean, that is a term that means many things to different people, but for this purpose, we need to actually be very clear as to what everything is being used for. And I think it's very reasonable for us as a city and as a community to ask that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to thank the committee for their effort. I think it's a great report. I had a chance to read it. I need to read it again because it's full of just fascinating detail in addition to the issues you highlighted. I want to say a couple of things. One is, I recognize that this whole process has taken a long time. When we started, I believe it's five or six years ago, and the hospital announced that it was going to move, most of us thought that they were, the hospital was going to move quickly in the process, and instead, it's taken, you know, years for them to get to the, even applying for the certificate of need part of the process. We never envisioned that the land use committee would be, I hate to say it this way, dragged out for years and years and years on it. I assumed, I think many of us assumed, that the hospital was serious and wanted to move quickly. You know, they kept crying about how they didn't have any money, and, you know, we assumed, well, that's why they want to move as fast as possible. That's not, in fact, what's happened. Instead, the committee has had to be extraordinarily patient. We have a proposal to extend the mandate, the charter of the committee, again, just because you're needed. You are needed. You know, we haven't seen a plan. We don't have a business plan. We don't have a detailed plan. How can you guys give us advice about what the hospital plans to do if you haven't seen anything that would be called a plan? You know, a concept plan isn't really what we need here. We need, we need all the details, as you have so aptly summarized. So I just want to, what can I say? We need you more, you know? Don't give up now. I want to say that I think the report does a marvelous job of highlighting the serious issues. To me, many of them are absolute deal breakers. You know, if the financing is not figured out and it's not self-sustaining, that's a deal breaker. If they have not addressed stormwater or other environmental issues, that's a deal breaker. You know, you know, I could go through the list. The ones you've highlighted are extraordinarily serious issues that need to be favorably resolved, and the community is very concerned about it. Second point I want to make, which I'm, I'm very supportive of the contest idea because I think it changes the dynamic. Currently, the dynamic is that the hospital tells us what it's going to do, when it decides to tell us, and however it decides to tell us, and so on, and we're being reactive to that. And it places the community, I think, in a, in a really one-down situation all the time. We have, the city of Tacoma Park is full of people who know lots about this. They know lots about architecture, planning, health care, environmental issues, financing, business people, the aesthetic parts of it, transportation. I mean, in my ward, I have, you know, Rowan that's full of experts, national experts on these topics, and the hospital needs to draw on that expertise. It's just a shame not to. And those people want to contribute their ideas. So we need to shift the, I believe, we need to shift the dynamics so that the residents are more actively involved with the hospital. And I struggled a long time how to get the hospital to see that, and I just never came up with any good way to get the hospital to do that. But I think the contest is a really novel, creative way to shift that dynamic because it will get people enthusiastic in the it will get people enthusiastic in the community. It'll get us all talking about different options as we see the plans that come out of the contest. And the hospital will have to deal with the plans that are put forth, and it'll force them, them to be reactive to what the community wants. So, I'm really supportive of the whole contest process. And I think the 5,000 that you've suggested as a prize pool is a great use of $5,000, frankly. And then, the last thing I want to say is I'm really supportive of your call for an actual business plan in a very traditional sense of that, the kind of thing that you would go to a bank with. You know, I'm going to ask for millions of dollars, here's my plan for how I'm going to use it and how it will be successful. We have nothing like that, nothing like that. And I just think it's irresponsible, frankly, for the hospital to think the community should accept it when a bank wouldn't. And so, I just can't say how pleased I am with the work you've done and the ideas you have in your report. And I'm just delighted, I don't want to repeat myself, but I am really pleased about it.
Can I address a couple of points? One is that the Adventist organization and hospital has recently described a proposed village group to be composed of hospital representatives largely and several community representatives. While I recognize that that's probably required for their purposes, we have to be really careful as a community that this type of organization or group doesn't co-opt the city's essential review of the whole process. So, I'd really caution that, one, the city should have very substantial representation in that group, and, second, we should still independently be pursuing our review of these issues. The other thing about the architecture competition that makes it a compelling idea to the committee is that, you know, originally, we received information from Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission that there was some, I'm not going to say this exactly right, but seed money essentially for a neighborhood plan, the initial portion of the master planning process that might be, that would fund some form of study of the site as it was integrated in the remaining community. We also have information that that site is zoned R-60, which is residential use. So, any major modification that goes beyond existing special exceptions, again, it's a huge question, a very technical point. But there are opportunities for the community to be engaged as the plans evolved on zoning issues. And so, unfortunately, due to the budget crunch and the municipal budget cutting that's occurred in our community and all over the country, that funding for the neighborhood plan study was cut this year. So, in lieu of that, I think we could still make some progress using this very kind of low-budget, out-of-the-box idea of, you know, the architecture competition, which, which our liaison to Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission has indicated very strongly would attract great interest. It's just the kind of competition, the kind of site, semi-urban, land reuse, that kind of sets these folks on fire. So, we think it's a good idea, and we should move forward with it.
Councilmember Wright, did you have any questions, comments?
I didn't have any questions. I agree with much of what's been said already, particularly from Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Snipper. I love the competition idea. I do think the one big takeaway that hasn't been mentioned is that the council needs to communicate more frequently with the land use committee going forward.
Can I address that for one second? Because, sitting as a committee chair, this is the first committee I've participated on in the city. I've now been a part of it for, I guess, three or four years since the inception of the original committee. It really is unclear to the committee how we are supposed to be interfacing with the council. And I know, and I'm encouraged by the fact that you guys are going to take this up in a working session very soon. But it is very difficult because our points of contact are the city staff, who are terrific resources. But we have been going along essentially for years, making assumptions that there was some communication back and forth to council without really delving into sort of how that looked, what it was, were your concerns or issues being communicated to us, were ours being communicated to you? There are no parameters, no guidelines. We had to decide that, well, yeah, it's been a year, it's time to come and talk to you guys about what we've been doing. And we have some really committed people in our committee from across Tacoma Park. Virtually every ward is represented, people from all professional backgrounds, and it's been a really wonderful committee to be a part of. But we would like a way to communicate with you guys more directly, just so that we could communicate our concerns and you could give us direction on the ways in which we could provide you with the best possible advice that would enable you to move forward. Luckily, you know, the, in our view, the resolution you passed is consistent with everything that we've discussed and, you know, the concerns that we've raised. So, you know, my point about the open meeting is, you know, more about process than it is a substantive one because I think we're all in concert on what the, you know, the shortfalls are in the information that's been communicated to the city and the committee.
We agree, we have those same concerns. We've tried to go to a process where we would hear from each committee at least once a year, and hopefully twice a year. There's been some difficulty in getting all of that scheduled, and that's part of the reason for the discussion that we're going to have in July, just to, we recognize the need for making clear what we need from the committees and from hearing back on a regular basis, how that is playing with the committee, what you need, what needs to change, what we need to hear.
Well, particularly when you have a committee as ours, which, as you recognize, is a longstanding committee, not a lot of action's been happening until more recently, and even then, it's a process that's dragging on for years and years. For us to feel that we're playing an integral role and that it's worth the expenditure of our time and effort and whatever, over years, literally, you know, we'd like to feel that, you know, we're contributing in some positive way to the decisions that you guys are making and that we're, you know, fulfilling our advisory mandate to the council.
We appreciate it. Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, thank you so much for preparing this report. I got it this afternoon. Fortunately, I had the time, and I've read through it very carefully, underlining a lot of stuff in there. You've done a tremendous amount of work and research, and I appreciate that. I, so I really thank you. Saying it all, I think your idea for competition is an excellent one for the reasons that Councilmember Snipper pointed out just a moment ago, is that it changes the dynamic of the discussion. I don't know whether $5,000 is enough, but I certainly support the idea. I basically am in agreement with the skepticism and the questions, all the questions that you have raised. And I've only become familiar with the Washington Adventist Hospital move recently, even though I've lived in Ward Six for 25 years. And I've only been on the, on the, Sid, this is my first, first term, and all of a sudden, this stuff is starting to come, come to the foreground, and so now we need to really, you know, get familiar with it all. I guess what I would say is that in the report, the information that I've seen, that we have gotten from the hospital, their representatives, I've seen nothing that contradicts or alleviates my skepticism about all the concerns that you have raised, which parallel kind of the concerns that I've raised. For one thing, one steps back and looks at a roadmap of the northwestern quadrant of this metropolitan area, and you look at where the new hospital is proposed to be built, which is on Cherry Hill Road, you realize very quickly, given the traffic volumes on New Hampshire Avenue or on Route 29, because you have to take one or the other to get there, that the travel times are such that no one who lives in Tacoma Park proper is going to have any reason to ever go to that hospital unless, for two reasons that I can think of, and I'm open to people explaining to me other reasons, is that, one, you're a physician, that's where he or she has privileges, and that's where you need to go because that's where your physician says you need to go to this hospital. Or you are of the Adventist faith, and you feel that it's the proper thing to do to go there for your healthcare. Otherwise, Holy Cross is far, far closer. And for that matter, Providence Hospital, which is in the District of Columbia, is far, far closer. And at no point in any of the material that I've read is any reference made to Providence Hospital and the services that it offers and why, why a citizen or resident of Tacoma Park wouldn't want to go there before they'd go to the new location out on where Washington Hospital proposes to locate. So, I think, in effect, I can think what is happening is that the hospital is essentially going to be abandoning, whether they intend to or not, but then the net market effect is that they're really going to be abandoning those people who depend on the hospital, who live in Tacoma Park, regardless of whether they're uninsured or whether they are fully insured. It just isn't syllogical to go past closer hospitals. Even the Washington Hospital Center is easier to get to because at least you know you got, you know, broad, well, I won't go further on that. With regard to the rehab costs, I can, I agree with your perception. My, you don't know this, but my background before I retired was in commercial finance. And a medical facility is probably the most costly per-square-foot building that one can build or can rehab. And the rehab costs on something like that should run into the hundreds of dollars per square foot to properly rehab an old building, such as they are described in the, in the hospital's concept plans. So, I think your, your take on that is astute, and I concur with it, that the amount that they're proposing to budget doesn't make a lot of sense. I was particularly drawn to the point in your, in your remarks, in your report, about the closing of the pharmacy. It's interesting to me that, having lived in, within a mile of that pharmacy, over on Wildwood Drive next to New Hampshire Avenue, for all those years, I never knew there was a pharmacy there. I've been to that hospital. One or the other members of my family have been in the emergency room and had operations done there a number of times. I didn't know there was a pharmacy there, and it suggests to me that the, that the hospital made no effort to promote that pharmacy, to advertise its existence, or to encourage people off the hospital campus to come and use it, that it was probably there as a convenience to the medical, to the physicians and their patrons, and otherwise, it was not, they really weren't interested in attracting people from the larger community. That's just a supposition on my part, but it, as you point out, the point of which you, why you mentioned it in your report, is that it indicates the business approach that the hospital has, has taken. And also, I would also add this, is that, let's imagine for a moment that you, we had a developer, that we had a site there, that a developer was coming to the city and saying, I want to develop these old buildings into something, coming to this community, to the residents, and to this council, and to our staff. We would, of course, expect something more than a general concept plan, and the assurance, the verbal assurance, that this is going to be really swell. You're going to love it, just wait and see. We would be wanting all the things that you talked about, all the things that all of us need to see and which we haven't seen. And of course, we're, we're assuming we're going to get to see all that stuff, but really, the goal line for the hospital is to get the certificate of need. The goal line isn't to satisfy the city of Tacoma Park, only to the extent that it allows them a way to get that certificate of need. So, I, I'm just extremely dubious, and nothing that this, that the officers from the, from the hospital have indicated in this room, to me, seems to go, going, seems to contradict that skepticism or that approach. In fact, if I were an officer of the Washington Hospital, the Adventist Hospital Corporation, and I wanted to move from where I am to out in White Oak, I would take the tactic that they're taking. From a business sense point of view, it's very logical. And the reason that they're not asking for community input, like Councilmember Snipper is talking about trying to, in gender, is that they don't want the community input. That's not going to serve their goal. Their goal is to get the new hospital built and built as soon as they can. And whatever happens on this site, goodness only knows. So, I do have one question for you, believe it or not, and then I will be quiet. At the corner of Flower Avenue and Carroll Avenue, there is a large grass area right across the street from the Sligo Church, which has a big parking lot on it, and a few trees, and a lot of grass that stretches, which, except for a couple occasions during the year, you never see. I think they had some sort of affair there once, something of that nature. Who owns that large swath of land that sort of stands between the university on one side and the hospital properties on the other side?
It's the University of Washington Adventist.
Well, what I don't, I guess it begs the question, I mean, I assume that that might be the, might be the case, is that if that were an empty site, which mostly it is, and somebody says, well, we want to put a parking lot there, the whole city of Tacoma Park would rise up and say, well, we're never going to allow you to just use that for parking. That could be used for a million other things, but parking's the last thing we want. But there it sits for years, decades. It's been doing nothing but seemingly providing parking for church members and university members, you know, church members on Saturday and university personnel or students perhaps the rest of the week, I don't know. But it's extraordinary underutilized, and I see, you talk about a design competition. I mean, you could put underground parking there and do all kinds of things on top of it, from anything that would be parkland to structures and buildings. But it's, it's sort of like this strange phenomenon. It's a donut hole in the middle of a donut, and I've never been able to figure it out.
Well, you know, interestingly enough, we have a great depth of experience on our committee, and one of our members who's not here this evening has significant residency in Tacoma Park and was able to give us some interesting history on that parking lot. Apparently, it was extremely controversial when it went in, from what I remember, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems as though there was some controversy, you know, when they were discussing putting, I don't know if they were even discussing putting the parking lot there, but it apparently showed up virtually overnight to people's consternation. That's what my takeaway from her discussion was. So, you might want to investigate that, just, again, it's sort of another warning sign about the, at best, charitably, lack of good communication between the hospital and the city and the citizens. I think about five years or six years ago, when the hospital was talking about relocating, the university at that time presented concept plans for expanding their, their educational space that included a number of buildings that would front Flower Avenue at that that included a number of buildings that would front Flower Avenue at that site. So it was in their long-range planning for the university. Obviously, funding is a major hurdle for the university, but they have floated plans from time to time, specifically those plans for the university, that were quite extensive. So it's not something that's escaped their attention.
My recollection is that there used to be university buildings that stood on that ground that burned down, and that they have a long-range plan that includes replacing those burned-down buildings with new buildings.
Really long-range.
Very long-range.
But we saw the concept plan, and the first stage of it is the Performance Music Building that's going in on Greenwood, and they were fundraising for the rest of them.
As far as using that land for hospital-related or, you know, healthcare-related space, my understanding from the hospital and Adventist organizations is that the ingress and the egress is a major hurdle post 9/11 in terms of hospital operations. And that's the one thing that they've directed our committee to as one of the main reasons beyond their inability to expand to the degree they need to on that.
Well, just keep in mind that if somebody has made up their mind what they want to do, I'm not telling you anything you don't already intuitively understand, is that there's going to be all kinds of technical reasons that you and I aren't going to be able to understand why we can't do something.
Right. Well, again, you know.
And I'm using the word "technical" in quotes.
Sure. I mean, again, it begs the question, why we haven't been presented with more detailed business and financial plans. The university and the Adventist organization have devoted tremendous resources to the planning for the move to White Oak. The reuse of this land and including the move itself, the cost of physically moving the property and people and everything else, tearing down a portion of the building, et cetera, necessarily involves much more detail than they provided us. It exists. We don't have it.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you all. Councilmember Clay, you're thinking about a house and the rehab costs and so forth. The typical house is a couple thousand square feet, so $35 a square foot would be $70,000, just to put it in context. So what can you get done to your house to rehab it for $70,000 if you need a new kitchen and a new bathroom and a new, that sort of thing? So that's, if it's, if you spend $100 a square foot, that's $200,000. If you spend $200, it's $400,000 on your single-family home. And I don't know how much space is in the hospital. Is it 100,000 square feet or more? We don't, I don't know. But let's just take 100,000 square feet, 50 houses worth, 50 single-family houses as a mark of reference. You know, maybe it's more or less. And that would be, at 35 bucks a foot, would be 3.5 million, but at $200 a foot would be 20 million. So there's quite a difference in numbers that we're talking about. And even, anyway, just to kind of put that out there. The timing of your coming back to us and the July 5 look at how we engage with committees is, to me, points to how you can, poster child's the wrong way to put it perhaps, but you can help us in figuring out better ways to interact with our committees. We need that help. I know that for me, we're exposed to an awful lot of information up here, and we tend to, I tend to lose track of what the various committees in town are doing unless I have some specific interaction with them. So this is good that you're concerned and that, as far as the open meetings laws, you know, when we're talking about it, we are careful. We say, "Well, this is, you know, don't go into policy." But you're also right in that these are issues that we do have to talk to you about and to the public. So I appreciate your coming to us on that particular point. I'm very much in favor of the $5,000 for the competition. I think that's a brilliant way to start, as Councilmember Snipper said, taking some ownership and some measure of control over the future of that space, that site. Seems to be right up your alley as the land use committee, seems, you know, like. And I'm in agreement with my colleagues about what the hospital has been willing to share with us in the past and what we anticipate that they might share with us in the future as regards business planning or other aspects of what they would do with that space. I don't think that, I mean, why say it again, they're leaving, and why count on them? And the points that you bring up about the Mary Center and transportation and stormwater are all great. Keep it up. And the competition is kind of a positive direction that we can go in. The hospital's in some transition to who knows what financially in light of medical costs and technological improvements and switches and changes in the delivery of medical services. I don't know enough about that to have an opinion. But at least the competition starts to give us all options, all of us in town. And whether the hospital takes those seriously or not, we don't have control over. But if MNC, PPC, who is the entity that any change in land use will have to go through in some form or another, if they're going to be involved to have them onboard from the beginning, is a great idea. And I'll just close by saying that I hope that you give your ex officio member my regards because I have very fond memories of having my own professional interaction with her.
Absolutely. She's been very helpful to the committee and, in fact, is extremely supportive of this architecture competition idea and believes that it would be a great catalyst for generating ideas that would be useful to the city.
Okay. Well, say hi.
I will.
Councilmember Clay has a short follow-up.
I would say my point about the relationship between the rent and the square footage is my, my house was 1,100 square feet.
Okay.
And my rent was $1,100. And so the, you know, it's the point of the value of a month's rent.
Well, 35 times 1,100 would be 35,000.
Well, so it's the relationship between sort of the values of the properties. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that when I was in college, we did a thing called the Urban Plan, I think it was run by the Lincoln Land Use Institute. And it might be worth checking into because it, we did it with high school kids, but essentially the community did a plan at the same time with a set of parameters, and it was a ton of fun. We came up with all kinds of innovative ideas for the MacArthur-Bart station, one of which was a rotating fast food center called Sky Munch. And the other one that is very memorable is one kid planned for a rubber room for his father to have 20 minutes in the rubber room to blow off steam before he came home. So you come up with really interesting ideas when you put things out to the community also.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's been very helpful. We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for our message tonight.
And looking forward to, we say that, focus around that, to the special session coming up in October of this year, which we'll talk about a little bit more as I go through this report. The gist of this session was really budget-focused. There was a tremendous amount of attention paid to the state budget, which came in at almost $2 billion deficit for just this year. And we have a large structural deficit on top of the annual deficit that the legislature was looking to start closing. The idea that the legislature went into the session with was to close this year's $2 billion budget and then chop away by thirds for each of the next three years, the structural deficit. Ultimately, with the actions that the General Assembly took, they actually ended up reducing the structural deficit by 42%. So hopefully, we've seen a lot of the major cutting happen and not as much pain in the next number of years, as long as the economy continues to slowly recover, which is, seems to be what's happening from the latest tax receipts the state has reported. So there was an awful lot of debate and discussion, consternation, a word I've heard a bit tonight, around the budget throughout the session. It really dominated the issues in the budget. There were many other issues that also played heavily this session, including the alcohol tax, including LGBT issues, same-gender marriage, and transgender rights were among some of the large issues that were out there. In terms of the city of Tacoma Park, we actually had, I think, a pretty full agenda this year. And we had a very active session, and I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to thank each of you, thank the city manager, Barb Matthews, and deputy city manager Suzanne Ludlow for being so ready to answer questions, provide opinions, come down to Annapolis, as a number of you did, and testify on bills, and particularly the alcohol bill for the city. We were on 24/7, and there were many nights, late at night, when Susie and I would be exchanging emails and telephone calls throughout the week and weekends. So I really appreciate that. It's what happens during the 90-day session, it's the pace of it. But it's important to note that that does happen, and it makes it possible for us to be as effective as possible for the city through the session. So I really appreciate that. Appreciate all the work that each of you has done in working with the members and with your own delegation in the 20th The two main things that I was hoping to focus on tonight, but I'm happy to address any issues, any pieces of legislation that you had interest in, are, one, the highway user fund, and, two, the city's alcohol bill. The first, the Transportation Trust Fund. The monies from that trust fund that are supposed to go towards highway user fees and many other good causes were, again, grabbed and taken to put towards the operating budget this year, with the exception of $147.5 million, which was allocated originally in the governor's budget for highway user fees. The rest of that-
How much comes into the Transportation Trust Fund each year?
You know, I actually, it changes. There were some new fees that were added on last year, so I can get you that information. I will take a look.
I mean, what percentage is 150 million of?
Very small, very, very small. Yeah, it's probably 1% to 2%.
Okay, got it. So 98% of the, what comes into the Transportation Trust Fund gets used for general purposes and 2% or whatever?
For this year.
For this year?
For this year.
Got it.
And through the actions of many, including Mayor Williams, we have spent a lot of time over this last year talking with other municipalities, talking with legislators, working to figure out how to get across the point that we have to do more in providing and restoring the highway user funds to the municipalities as well as the counties. But our focus was for the city of Tacoma Park. You know, the thought, the first year that they raided the trust fund was, well, you know, it's one year. Well, we're now into, what, year three, I believe, of having almost no money allocated towards either building or repairing highway users, highways. And so now we're getting into the more structural problems. And I think we've spent a lot of time over this past interim and during this session really honing in on that point and making sure that people understand that if we're not able to just patch, you know, the holes, that we end up having much larger, more expensive problems. And that message is finally starting to really resonate. And I think that that, combined with a lot of good collective effort, led to much more of an open ear this year from the legislature, from the budget committees, in recognizing the need to figure out a way to provide at least some more money to the municipalities in particular for highway user fees. So we were pleased when the budget was decided by the General Assembly that an additional $13 million was added in for highway user fees, the vast majority of which went to municipalities. That's still a very small amount and not nearly enough. So one of the things that I wanted to highlight to you that we're going to be expecting in this upcoming special session is the possibility of debate of a gas tax. An increase in that to be dedicated solely, although the Transportation Trust Fund is a dedicated account, but it gets raided. But the idea is to have an additional increase in the tax for gasoline to go towards the Transportation Trust Fund and not be rated for the operating budget. That is going to be a pretty big debate. We know that because gas prices are fluctuating right now. I can tell you that as I talked to members through, you know, the course of the summer so far, the late spring, it sort of depends on the week, on where people are. And that really depends on where the gas price is, as it did during the past regular session. Because there were, we did start the session with the concept that that was going to be one of the taxes on the table, and specifically to go towards highway user funds.
Is that a fixed amount on a gallon of gas, or is it a percentage?
It would be a fixed amount, was what was going to be, was what was introduced, actually, by Senator Garagiola.
So as the price of a gallon of gas goes up, the revenues associated with that do not go up?
That's correct.
That's too bad, in a sense.
So throughout the session, we really had the case of, as gas prices were going up, that went off the table. We saw, you know, about four or five weeks into session, the prices started coming back down. So that discussion about whether we're going to have a tax on this or not came up again. And so that discussion really waxes and wanes with the price of gas.
And it's kind of crazy because as the price goes up, the amount, number of gallons is going to go down, which forces down the income coming. So it seems totally anti-logical, not logical that you wouldn't have a percentage on there, but there's probably history in that, too.
Well, and there may be, I mean, that might be one of the pieces that they decide for this upcoming session. We don't know yet what, you know, what proposals are going to be out there. I will tell you that some members of the General Assembly are more apt to want to have this discussion and others are not. Members of leadership speak different ways in different weeks, depending on the price of fuel and the economic numbers that are coming out. You know, it's, we're going to have to see how this flushes out. The Blue Ribbon Commission on Transportation Funding is still meeting. They met, in fact, this afternoon. There are still discussions about how are we going to put together a system that's fair and equitable, that we're going to try to, you know, flesh some of this out and see what we put on the table in the upcoming sessions. They aren't talking specifically about the special session. They're talking about sort of in the future. But in the meantime, I do expect that during the special session, there is going to be a push for increasing the gas tax and probably some other concepts in order to raise money to direct it to the highway user funds. And so I think the work that the staff and the council and the mayor have been doing to really push this idea that we can't go without highway user funds, that this revenue is absolutely essential, or we end up with much larger structural, much more costly problems, I think that we need to keep pressing that issue now as they get ready for the October session. Tomorrow, the House Ways and Means Committee, which is the taxing committee, is having an organizational committee meeting, which is very different. It doesn't typically happen. An organizational meeting doesn't happen outside of the beginning of session. So I think that's a pretty good signal that they are expecting to see discussion during the upcoming special session on taxes. And as you know, the Ways and Means Committee is chaired by Delegate Sheila Hickson here in the 20th District. is chaired by Delegate Sheila Hickson here in the 20th District. So I would strongly suggest continuing the efforts that we've been putting forth in getting those messages out about the need for the highway user funds and why it's become even more critically important. And as you head to MML in the next week, talking, continuing to talk with your other municipal leaders, to be doing the same, to see how much this we can do as a concerted effort together, to make sure that we're getting that message across.
And there will be, my sense is that there will be more state legislators at the convention than we have seen in the past. They're taking a more active role in moderating sessions and-
Yes.
-that kind of thing. So there will be an opportunity to talk to some of them at the convention.
Terrific.
More so than in the past. And also, for anybody who has any particular thoughts or questions about the Blue Ribbon Panel, one of the municipal representatives on that is Greenbelt Mayor Jay Davis. So a chance to talk to her in Ocean City about that as well.
Absolutely.
I talk to her regularly, and there's a lot of detail there.
[laughing]
And just one quick observation on the, on the legislatures ebbing and flowing on their approach to a possible increase in the gas tax. What always strikes me is that, I don't know, I guess maybe I'm different from how they operate in the way that whenever I think about the discussion about potential raise to a gas tax, it seems to me that as the price of gas goes up, the potential impact of a penny, five pennies, whatever, whatever the potential increase is, becomes smaller and smaller as the price goes up. The price of gasoline has gone up more than five cents in a day. And, and you just kind of don't even, you miss the fact that there's another five cents of tax in there. When it was 40 cents a gallon, you'd notice it, but if it's $4 a gallon, it's a lot harder to think about that nickel.
Point taken. Point taken. I think, you know, given what we saw on the alcohol tax this year, there are lessons from that in terms of what to expect from various regions of the state and various members in how this could be discussed, even though everyone has roads and needs roads.
Is that a good segue into the alcohol?
Well, it could be. And I would just add one other point. Right now, there are regulations out that are being promulgated, and there are public hearings going on around the state, around the hike in tolls at bridges and the tunnels. And so we're going to have, you know, the promulgation of those regulations segueing into, you know, the special session. And we could see some of that play out in special session. We could see legislation around toll increases and, you know, using that a certain way or another, or the, there are certain regions, like in Cecil County over the Susquehanna River, where they're talking about, this is a specific economic impact on just our population, because most of the state doesn't drive across the Susquehanna River. So you're going to see more of, you know, my own backyard, rather than, here's what we need to do for the state revenue coffers. But yes, that's, it is still a good segue into the alcohol bill. So as everyone knows, we attempted very hard to pass a bill this year that would have allowed the Class B on and off sale license to happen in the city of Tacoma Park, with the city having the first right of refusal for the license. And I would say that the efforts put forward by everyone were very good. We ran into a brick wall in the last weeks of session, I guess we should say. You know, up until then, things had been proceeding along, I think, pretty well. We hit some bumps in the road, but we were always able to overcome those. But what, what truly is the problem with, with the bill in the minds of the Subcommittee of the Economic Matters Committee of the House, is that the idea of right of first refusal by the city would set a state precedent for county liquor boards. And so they were not willing to allow the city, even though this was a delegation bill, both from the 20th delegation and from the Montgomery County delegation, they were not willing to let the bill move forward with the first right of refusal going to the city because of this concern that it would create a statewide precedent. So we have been talking an awful lot about, you know, ways to, to think about this moving forward for next year. And I don't know that we have a clear answer yet, but we have a lot of, a number of ways that we think we need to explore. And one of them is to consider, you know, whether it's feasible to put in a statewide bill. If the concern is this creates a statewide precedent, then let's see with MAKO and with MML if we can get enough support to put this in as a statewide bill. Just hit the issue head-on. I think, honestly, I think that it will probably take a little bit of time. It's not going to be a one-year effort. But we will need to, I think, put out a lot of feelers, have a number of meetings with MML members and with, and obviously with convention coming up. It's an opportunity to explore with some of the members whether or not this is even an issue that they have interest in or concerns with, and whether we could get some support. We would need to do the same thing with MAKO. There are some other ideas that Susie and I have, have discussed. And one of them is having, setting up some meetings with the county lobbyists. Mel Wanger, who is the lead lobbyist for the county, actually approached me after everything happened in the delegation, although we were successful in the delegation, and said that she thought she might have some ideas for a workaround. So the idea is for Susie, myself, and a couple others to sit down together and see if any of these are workable ideas. And if they meet both the criterion that the Subcommittee, you know, put out there, their concerns about statewide precedent, and if they meet the city's desire to be able to have the first crack at whether or not this person should be, this entity should be licensed.
Is that along the lines of, say, go for the, for the state bill as a local courtesy without that provision, but have something worked out with the county? Is that, is that a possibility? Is that the type of thing?
We have to talk it out. I think, we don't know what Mel has in mind.
Right. And so I think, you know, having a meeting with them first, and then bringing in the liquor board to start talking to them about, what is your major resistance? Because the county supported the bill, even though the liquor board had reservations, had opposition, actually. And so let's see where there's some room. Obviously, the bill would have passed if we'd taken away the first right of refusal, but-
But given how far we had gone, that would just be rolling over.
That's right. Exactly. So the idea was, let's shelve this for the moment, for this last few weeks of session, and come back and have more in-depth conversations with those parties that were having, laying out concerns in the last two weeks of session, and see where we can get to. I do know that Kensington is interested in having the same thing. So there are-
Which is good, but which is, which was strategically bad for us.
Strategically bad for us, and unfortunately, you know, they amended their bill to simply say, once they knew that our bill wasn't going to pass, to say that the liquor board has to listen to them.
And then did it pass?
It passed, but it didn't give you anything more than you currently have, which is the right to address the liquor board.
Although maybe that's a stepping stone, saying, well, Kensington, they have to listen to Kensington, now you have to listen to us.
They have to listen to us, too, but-
And their point is, we do listen to you. So it, you know, it didn't really address the issue.
Let's tie the knot, though, right?
[laughing] So that is, that is another idea, you know, that we need to explore. There are, you know, there are a number of iterations, I think, that we need to look at, and really hear more clearly from the county liquor board why they are having this concern. I would also like to meet more directly with Delegate Barkley, who chairs the Subcommittee in Economic Matters, and see where he, what, where he could get to, to be comfortable enough to help us proceed with a bill such as this, to try to figure out where we have some room. And so that's some of the work that's going to be going on in the next month as we get, you know, closer to special session. But I really want to sort of peg some of those things down. And I think that as the council has the ability to be talking to other members of MML, and if you happen to talk to MAKO, I'll be talking to them also, to gauge whether or not others have this interest in addition to Kensington. You know, we can start fleshing out, as we get closer to session, what our options are and what our approach could be. And we could have approach A, B, and C lined up.
One thing that might be helpful in talking to MAKO, like I can talk to Michael Sanderson, who's the executive director, but it might be good to know who's on, who was on their legislative committee this year. It doesn't say who's going to be on it next year, but that, there might be some opportunities to talk to those folks.
And the chair of the Legislative Committee for MAKO is County Executive Alman.
Right, and he's going to be at the convention.
And he's going to be at the convention. We do know from, from our bill that Howard County does not have any municipalities.
Right.
A point that was made.
Although they have a very large homeowners association.
Yes, they do. Having almost been a member of it. So I think we need to just continue these discussions, have more in-depth discussions with a variety of parties, to really be able to flesh out where there is room, where there is, you know, where there is some potential for common approach, and where we have a possibility of moving this in a fashion that suits the city. And I look forward to continuing, you know, to having these meetings with folks so that we can develop further a plan for the next year, you know, assuming that we're going to move forward with putting in a bill for next year again.
And it would be helpful if you can, if you have conversations on these various topics, any kind of lobbying topics, if you can send an email to Michelle and to me so that we've at least got a sense of what, who's made what connections, and if there's some follow-up we need to do.
Let me just say that the day that I was down there with you, Susie, after the meeting, the delegation meeting concluded, I was talking to the, I remember the gentleman who was the chairman of the county liquor board, one-on-one. I was trying to find out from him the question that you're asking, you're all asking, and we're all asking in our minds, as to what is the actual resistance? Because I was trying to suggest to him that what this bill would do would be to make your job easier, because it would, you know, kind of screen out some of the worst cases that no one's going to approve, so you don't even have to ever deal with them. And it would enable us to give you much more powerful input. And so then I was thinking, well, just because the Montgomery County Liquor Board opposed it, I wonder if, say, the liquor board for some other county, like Hartford County, or Cecil County, or Frederick County, if they would automatically just make that same ideological, take that same ideological approach, or whether they might have different ideologies behind the whole thing.
Fred, don't keep us in suspense. What was the answer?
I couldn't get an answer satisfying, you know, we just-
You asked, but he said, no, no, no.
They really hadn't thought it out, I think.
Yeah.
It was mostly, I mean, every, every time we'd have the discussion in, in a variety of settings down there, it was mostly, but we already do let you talk to us. And so there wasn't anything beyond that. They could not point to a particular reason-
That's true.
Other than, this is how it's been done, and-
And it works, and so why change it?
And we listen to you. You can always come to us. So there, there wasn't a particular policy issue.
It was sort of a sense of fear of change, and maybe the suddenness, all of a sudden, because the liquor board from Montgomery County didn't come out right away with their opposition. It was late in the process, long after the county executive and the county council had stated their support, and the Montgomery delegation had made clear its abundant support. It was only then that the liquor board itself kind of got wind of it, maybe prompted by Mr. Barkley, I don't know. And then, all of a sudden, they sort of rallied to make, make their case. And who knows, but that if they've had six months or a year to sit on it and think about it, that, that they might evolve in their thinking a little bit, or be more receptive.
And it'll be helpful if we know more rather than less by September, October, because the Montgomery County municipalities and the county council are going to get together and talk about legislative priorities and approaches to avoid the problem that there was last year with the stormwater bill.
Terrific.
So Council President Irvin and I are going to put that together.
That's terrific.
So if, so if we can talk to them about this, then, that will be very helpful.
Do you want to go into the special session?
Sure.
This is just right here.
And then, just to let you know, so as I, as I mentioned, we're going to have a special session in October, and that's for congressional redistricting. It's not for the legislative redistricting, which will happen next session, the regular session. It's expected that it's going to be for two weeks in October, which means that clearly they're going to be discussing something in addition to congressional redistricting. And the two topics that we are hearing the most about are, one, the alcohol, I'm sorry, the gas tax increase, and I'm blanking, oh, pension shifts. So President Miller is continuing to talk about his idea of shifting pension costs to the locals. As you know, a great deal of change occurred related to pensions this past session. And so the House, I don't think, is really willing to entertain any more discussion of this idea in the special session. They really want to see how the actions that they took just two months ago play out over the next year or so, and what the implications of those are, the effects on both the state and on the locals. So while there may be some traction in the Senate at the behest of the president to have this debate and discussion, I doubt that the House is going to be as willing to entertain any more shifting on pensions from the state to the locals in the upcoming special session. So I think mostly we're going to be focusing a lot on transportation funding and the congressional redistricting. There, there is an opportunity for anyone to introduce a bill during special session. You're not, you know, relegated to having it only be to a certain topic. But every bill that is introduced in special session automatically goes to the Rules Committee, which means it's up to the leadership to decide what's coming out, because the leadership controls the Rules Committees on both chambers. And so each chamber's leadership will decide, and that's usually orchestrated before we go in to special session, what are the issues that we're going to tackle. And so it will take a vote of the leadership to bring any bills out of the Rules Committee onto the, into committees and onto the floor. So we are hoping that it's limited to the two weeks. We are hoping that there will be something related to transportation that we can start working on in a proactive fashion, instead of waiting till the next session. working on in a proactive fashion, instead of waiting till the next session to be able to get a leg up on transportation funding.
When there's special sessions, do they do kind of public hearings or have the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we may very well want to be prepared during that time to testify on highway user revenue.
Absolutely, yes. So the same process that happens during regular session happens for a bill if it comes out of the Rules Committee.
Okay.
Committee hearings, I mean, it'll be an expedited timeframe.
It'll be really fast.
It'll be very fast, and there will be various debate and discussion. So it's actually, it's a really good point of being prepared in advance, especially for things that we know, you know, if we can get any traction, that we'd like to get moving. And it's, again, going to be similar to what we did during regular session this year, which is, anything that's introduced, we look for some opportunity to raise that discussion around highway user fees, which is, you know, there were a number of bills that were put in this session around highway user fees. None of them passed, but each of those offered an opportunity for us to come to the table and talk more and raise the issue more, and make sure that people are getting those points, you know, drummed into the head about the need for highway user fees and what is happening by letting this pot be raided over and over. So, you know, I think we're going to look to make that as much of an issue as possible with your help.
Okay. Just want to mention, just very briefly, I know that there's the task force about stormwater controls. We'll have the staff person participating in that. Alkar's pulled together a little task force to work on the, try to make his bill happen this time, by doing some of the preliminary work. But you said that in a few years, they'll be doing more about stormwater.
Yes. We expect over the next year or two, there to be more work on stormwater management. The state's falling further behind on its requirements for the Clean Water Act and the Chesapeake Bay revitalization, and there are some court-ordered deadlines coming up that the state's going to have to start showing progress towards. And so we are expecting to see over the next session or two, more work on stormwater management.
I think, a couple of things we want to come out, both for the next item on your agenda, which has to do with the MML legislative action requests and just in general, as if there are topics or bills that you want to have us look into or start to prepare to work on, we'd like to hear about those so that we can pull things together. I think, I'm blanking out here, when we come back on the MML action, July 5th, there'd be a resolution about the city Tacoma Park's recommendations for legislative action requests by MML, the legislative priorities for MML. So we need to be thinking about that and having those prepared so that you'll be able to review those and determine if that's what you want to put forward. But if there are other things, either, you know, if it's something that we need to know in advance of the special session, or then going into regular legislative session, we often do better talking about it before the session starts. So if there's something that you have a priority on, we'd like to know that.
One thing that I'd like us to put on our list for MML is the bill that went, a renewed effort this year of the bill that went in late last year that was sponsored by Delegate Hucker for the bank exemption on the personal property tax. I think there have been some observations and some discussions about different approaches to make that happen, but I think it would be helpful for the city to put that on the list.
And it might be interesting to consider the universe of cosponsors or joint sponsors on that.
Yes, yes. I've had some input on that.
Okay.
Michelle, you may be aware that the balance has shifted a little bit as regards tax duplication and the payments for tax duplication in the county, that there's some progress being made, at least as far as I can tell, about the county council's willingness to take up this issue of tax duplication and the rebate that comes to municipalities in Montgomery County. And what's been placed on the table is, at least to discuss, part of the discussion is the alternative to having a rebate come from the county to the municipalities. That alternative, as is the case in Prince George's County, is to not have a rebate at all from the county to the city, but rather to lower the tax burden for individual taxpayers who live in municipalities.
The offset.
Those are two approaches. The latter is called the offset. My concern is that without us on the council willing to have that direct discussion with the counties about how much our rebate would be, without us, our taxpayers would have no real voice in, or not a voice through us, in any case, in talking to the counties about what the offset might be. Both of these approaches are in state law, and both approaches have no provision for the municipalities having a real place at the table. Rather, we can't, we may be listened to, or may not be listened to. So I don't know, and MML is fully aware of all of these issues and how it plays out. But I wonder if it makes any sense to craft something, or to ask MML to craft something, to examine the way that has come to pass, the reason we're here, and if there's some tweaking so that when we, next year, although I won't be on the county during the budget season next year, or on the council during the budget season, so that the city can have more information or have a better, have some talking points about that change if it were to occur.
Is there, has there been any fiscal analysis done by either Mako or MML on both approaches? On either approach or both?
Good question.
We can check with that. I mean, you know, certainly Jim Peck at MML knows this stuff backwards and forwards, and we can check with him and see. My guess is that it's been some time if it was done.
Since an analysis of the difference...
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think there's something that has been done recently.
And, of course, we don't know if there are other counties that are in a similar situation where one squawking municipality has forced them into a corner, or a series of municipalities have forced them into the corner, where they're going, "Stop squawking, we'll consider the other approach." But this may be, and so in that light, this may be one of those instances where that shift is considered. And it might be an opportunity to try to analyze, well, what does that shift really mean fiscally?
Right.
What the formulae are. You may know that we had, just to continue this for one more second, you may know that we had a committee here in Tacoma Park which studied the implications of tax duplication and service duplication. And I like to say to people, it asked a question, and the question was, "Are we getting screwed?" And the answer came back very clearly, "Yes." And then after that, there was a second kind of phase in this trudge, and that second phase was a county, city, municipal, and county task force on which our esteemed city managers played a very great role. And in my mind, the question on that effort, which took a couple of years, was it more than a couple of years?
Not done yet.
Number of years, it's still not finished. The question there was, "Does anyone understand the formula?" And the answer seems to be, "No, we lost the numbers," or something to that effect. And so we're now in a new phase, and again, the council is tired of listening to us and other municipalities squawk about this. And the new phase is some other question, like, well, can we make it fair?
Right, right.
And I think everybody here and any other municipalities in Montgomery County would like to, on behalf of our citizens, if the burden shifts directly to them and not through the municipalities, the answer would, it would be nice if the answer was, "Yes, we can make it more fair." So to the extent that we can engage Jim Peck or MML, or at the state level, to try to put pressure where it's appropriate to see, you know, what can be done, that's what I'm getting at.
And it might be, it would be an interesting question for both MML and for Mako, to hear our other counties having this experience.
And I know Frederick County, Frederick County and the municipalities in Frederick had recent fisticuffs over this.
Interesting.
And Prince George's County, just a couple of years ago, revised their tax offset.
And back to our initial committee, this is our most pressing concern, because that committee came back with an estimate for how much we feel we're being short-changed by the counties on an annual basis. And lo and behold, our estimate, of course, the county doesn't agree with us at all, was that between a third and a half of our budget is being short-changed. We're losing between a third and a half of our budget by the county for the services that we provide that they don't reimburse us for. That is a, I mean, a third of our budget for our substantial 24-plus million dollar budget is $8 million, which dwarfs the highway user, it dwarfs any other financial consideration we can even conceive of. So this is a huge issue for us.
Are there some other topics that, I'll show you some of that information.
Sure.
Are there other topics that we should be putting forward as an MML legislative action request, or some general statewide bill coming up? Things that you want to get on our wavelength?
Well, I would just say that, I don't think we have to lead the effort, but I know that there are efforts around utility reliability and working better with utilities, and I think that that's critical.
And they're paying serious attention to that.
Well, you know, if the article came out about the, what's the name of the PFCO holdings, PHI or something, you know, and their dividend payments and, you know, all that. I got another email from a constituent last week, asking about why we don't plan for undergrounding the utilities as we do all this roadwork.
Exactly.
And, you know, yeah, I mean, our roads are all crappy now, since we spent all of the highway user revenues on whatever else it was important to us at the time. It's probably a good time to have that conversation as well. And I think that the excuses about why it can't be done are just that, they're just excuses. And that would certainly generate significant reliability, I think, to be able to do that.
Anything else?
I urge you to send me emails or whatever, so that on July 5th, I've got some materials prepared for you, and as we go forward, and also, you know, keep in contact during the convention or just following the convention, so that we're able to follow up on those things. We look forward to starting, it seems like we just got done, starting over again with the legislative session. And I do think that one of the...
It's like the NBA.
It's never, it's never over. I think one of the things that I do want to make a special point of noting is that Michelle Douglas's work on the highway user revenue and keeping that in front of a number of committees that didn't hear from any other municipalities at times was really important. We ended up with a number of legislators hearing the message in places they didn't expect to hear it and becoming receptive. And I think that although we've certainly gotten support from the governor's office, recognizing that municipalities need this money and some other places, because we were able to be there in committee after committee, and you get to grab people in the hallways as was done, I think that Tacoma Park had an outsized role in having the HUR money come our way. And I think, and I give a lot of credit to Michelle, either she was doing it, or she was giving us a call and saying, "It needs to be, I need to have somebody here for this." And having those ears and eyes present made a big difference, I think, this session. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. I really enjoy it. I learn something new every time, and I think a couple of you have said tonight, "Have you learned something?" Sitting here tonight. That's the beauty of it, you do. And it gives me even more to talk about when we go to the general assembly, so I appreciate it.
And I also appreciate your speaking to the Mayor's Association.
That was wonderful. I mean, that was another great idea for another opportunity. And I think the more of those we can look to, you know, to find, to develop, and cultivate more of those, you know, we're going to keep honing that message and getting more people speaking with us in concert and getting our message out. So I appreciate you figuring out that opportunity and asking me to help you with that. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. We'll move to the first reading resolution amending the charter. Somebody want to move it?
Can I move it?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Not allowed to talk.
Public comment, I can hear. Could you summarize the public comments, please?
There were none.
Yes.
Josh, I just wanted to say, to be clear, that whether you agreed or disagreed with the annexation, that we do need to correct the charter or make the charter accurate post-annexation. So to me, this is just a formality of making sure we articulate this correctly in our charter.
That's right, thank you.
And there was no public comment, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it.
Bruce is going to take off here for a moment, and he's told me that I should do the next couple items. Good practice for next week, yes, I have to practice more, try pushing those buttons. We have in our regular meeting, the second reading ordinance establishing a facility maintenance reserve.
Move the ordinance.
Is there a second? Did you get the, okay. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any council discussion? Can't see the lights from here, so you guys will have to wave at me. I did have one quick question, myself. So we have a guideline for what our unrestricted reserve should be. Since we're taking a bit of money out of that unrestricted reserve and putting it in the facilities maintenance reserve, will we then, in essence, for all practical purposes, have a smaller unrestricted reserve as our minimum? Should I look forward to that in the next budget? Or is it just too small to really see?
The guideline actually is not formally adopted by the city council. There are some cities that have formal reserve policies, but the guideline that we have shared is that, which is recommended by the GFOA. But, yeah, the practical consequence is if you did not pass this ordinance this evening, you would essentially increase your unrestricted reserve by $250,000 in the absence of some other action.
Thank you. Any more discussion? This is a second reading ordinance, so we need a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams, Councilmember Wright.
Here, I mean, sorry, affirmed, yeah.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Thank you. Our second regular, oh, great, so Bruce put an aye, so that's unanimous. Does that count? I think that does. We didn't go on to the next item.
The clerk says no.
Clerk says no? Okay.
Yeah, it still passes.
It still passes, that's true. Item seven is a resolution authorizing continued participation with Montgomery County for the purpose of receiving CDVG and home funds.
Move the ordinance for resolution.
Wait a second.
Wait a second. Did I hear a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Brad. Councilmember Schultz, excuse me. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay.
Do we have any staff?
Do we have any staff background?
Questions, I'll be glad to hear them.
Okay. I don't see any lights. Oh, I still see one. Thank you, Dan.
I haven't heard, I haven't, I guess, paid attention to the home investment partnership programs. What home investment partnerships do we maintain, if any?
They have, there's been one project in the last five years where home funds were invested, and that was in a multifamily rehab for MHP up at 7513 Maple Avenue, the Edinburgh House. And they were able to secure $685,000 for that particular project. But again, that's the one project of home funds that had been awarded in the last five years.
Okay, and were they able to secure that only because we had opted to be part of the, let me, I guess I have to back up. I remember these discussions before, where we were either, we had a choice, either to accept a certain, more or less, fixed amount of money from CDVG, or apply on our own behalf for CDVG funds. Do I have that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and is this the option where we opt to take, like, a fixed amount?
If you were to adopt this resolution, you would continue to participate in the county's CDVG program, so you would receive a portion of their entitlement every year, where this council has the right to allocate those resources as it feels is appropriate. If you decided not to adopt this resolution, then none of the affordable housing providers like MHP, or any of the single-family homeowners, or anyone who has historically taken advantage of some of the housing rehab programs that are administered by the county, would be able to access those funds. They would have to apply either through the city, or directly to the state for the small cities grant programs.
And now, is that last portion of what you were describing, the home funds?
That would include the home funds as well.
Okay, when you say that would include the home funds, what other funds are there available that aren't the home funds?
This fund, this resolution affects just the community development block grant program, and the home program, both of which are administered by Montgomery County, and both of which can be accessed by residents or property owners in Tacoma Park.
Okay, I'm still a little unclear. You said, in the last, in your memory, only in one instance, home funds have been accessed.
Correct.
That's MHP, $680,000, which is five times the entire yearly allotment, so that was a large number.
Correct.
But then you said, if we didn't adopt this ordinance, that individual landlords or property owners would not be able to apply for home funds through us, or for other funds?
Correct.
Okay.
They would have to go directly to the state and apply on a competitive basis, or a more competitive basis, at the statewide level.
So, MHP took advantage of the home funds through us? Because we had adopted this in the past year?
Because we'd adopted this, or this resolution, MHP was able to access those funds through the county.
Through the county, but through us, because we had adopted it, or?
Because we'd adopted the resolution, we don't administer the home program?
Could, I guess my question is, could they have gone through the county had we not had this agreement in place?
No, they would have had to apply to the state, and would have been competing with others for home funds.
And that's because that, their project was in our corporate boundaries, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and now, the final clarification is, what other funds are there besides the home funds? And how many times have landlords or others been successful in applying for those funds? Not the home funds, because I understand that, on your knowledge, the home funds were only accessed once.
Right. The other program that funds, or residents or property owners could access, would be the many rehab programs that the county administers, that are funded with CDVG programs, dollars.
Does that mean it has to be through the CDVG program?
Those funds, those particular rehab programs are financed with community development block grant funds.
Okay, now, I'm almost thoroughly confused.
I think I forgot where you were going. Or the programs that you were just talking about, they're county programs?
Yes. It's money, it's the community development block grant program--
I get it.
--that HUD has, and then they allocate it out in a variety of ways. Montgomery County is an entitlement community, so they get a portion of those funds, and they disperse them to eligible applicants throughout Montgomery County, except for those areas in the map that's included in your agenda packet, that have opted out.
Right.
Not all of their housing rehab programs are funded with community development block grant funds, though many of them are. And in the last five years, there have been roughly $600,000 of CDVG funds funneled through the county to local property owners for rehab programs. We don't administer those--
Therefore, it's accessing CDVG money that goes to the county, but which is not part of the sub-allocation of CDVG funds to the city.
It's extra money, it's above and beyond what we get.
Right. Is that where you were going?
That's pretty good, you were able to confuse the mayor, too.
No, I'm not confused.
I don't remember home funds coming up in the CDVG, in this CDVG question in prior years. Maybe I just--
It's always been there, it's just it's not, because we don't administer it, you may not have, it may not have registered.
Okay, we don't administer it, but we do administer the CDVG funds.
We administer a portion of the community development block grant funds.
A portion of the county?
But there's another portion that is CDVG money that goes to Montgomery County, that can end up benefiting--
Right.
--properties or property owners in the city of Tacoma Park that's not part of that sub-allocation.
Through a variety of granting vehicles.
Correct.
One of which is home.
American or--
The home vehicle, we are clear that we, that one entity has gotten $680,000, but we're not clear on if, whether or not other entities, landlords or whatever, have gotten, taken advantage of any of the other programs.
I heard you say about $600,000.
They have.
In Tacoma Park?
In Tacoma Park.
And the $600,000, is that the number you were referring to, or was that $600,000 a different constellation of entities?
The $600,000 is just for the home program, and that was just a single project for MHP.
Right, so that's--
There have been additional projects funded with the CDVG funds that are not part of the city's allocation, that were administered by the county, but are also considered community development block grant funds.
But we don't know how many of those dollars come to the city, is that correct?
I have a list here. $110,000 went to single-family homeowners, $36,000 went to a group home, and another $300,000 went to other multifamily property owners for renovation.
Okay, was that last year?
In the last five years.
Okay, in the last five years, then, now we're getting somewhere. In the last five years, $500,000 or $600,000 have come to us, not associated with home funds, through the county, that would not have come here necessarily unless they were, would have been competed for at the state level--
Correct.
--had we not taken this, taken this track.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm finally unconfused.
Councilmember Schultz, could you summarize that for me?
Oh, well, we'll see. The block grant program has been around for, I believe, in excess of 30 years. I know I worked on it early in my career when I was an urban planner, at least working as one. And my, I guess the question I have is, has the city at any time considered, seriously considered, this option of applying directly to the state? Or is it simply obvious that we're far better off doing it the way we have been doing? And it's a simple question. I'm not trying to lead you anywhere, I'm just--
Yeah, I don't know. I believe Councilmember Clay had mentioned some interest in opting out of the program during the budget discussion. To my knowledge, at least during my tenure here, the council has not had any specific conversation about opting out of the current structure of the community development block grant program.
But certainly, while the council may or may not have had that serious conversation, at the staff level, you've certainly had, have wanted to scrutinize it, and compared notes with your professional colleagues and other municipalities in the state, and around the United States, who get together annually at these conventions and discuss the pros and cons of going the state, small cities route, or through the county, and this we do in Maryland. And, I mean, where do you come out on that?
There are advantages and disadvantages to both options.
Uh-huh.
With all things, right? If this council were to elect to continue to participate in the community development block grant program under its current structure, the advantages are that you have a pot of money that basically you can allocate or distribute as you see fit--
Right.
--without a lot of competition. A majority of those dollars typically go for city-initiated projects, with about 25% going for smaller projects like Mano Foods, and the Crossroads Farmers Market, et cetera. There are, there's a lot of work involved in that, but there is a lot of discretion, which is very nice. If you were to opt out of the program, and just turn it over to the state, you could access additional dollars for city-initiated projects, or outside organizations like MHP, or Mano Foods, et cetera, could elect to submit an application to the state directly, and increase the possibility of getting additional dollars, more than you would be able to allocate to them based on your annual allotment. I've looked at what the state has done in the past, and frankly, they don't do a whole lot of projects. They do a lot of big projects. So, last year, for example, they funded 13 projects, ranging in awards from $40,000 to $800,000, with about four projects at a funded level of $800,000. And those were primarily construction projects. Many of them were public infrastructure improvements that were initiated by the local government, be it the city or the county. Many of them focused on ADA improvements, though there were buildings being built and renovated, et cetera. A majority of the projects they tend to fund are construction-related, again, either with infrastructure improvements like street skate projects, or primarily building, renovation or new construction.
Hard cost, capital, hard capital costs--
Correct.
--as opposed to--
bricks and mortar types of projects.
Programmatic people program.
So, if you were to opt out of the program, it may create some challenges for some of the smaller entities such as Mano Foods, et cetera, in that it would limit their access to what historically has been fairly accessible money. They also tend not to approve projects for more than one cycle. So, the city council has, for example, funded both Mano Foods and the Crossroads Farmers Market for a period of years. So, you can sort of nurture an organization or a new program for up to three years, before you can no longer fund them with block grant dollars. So, frankly, there really are some advantages and disadvantages.
I know how I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote to continue, to opt in, not opt out, but I just appreciate your, what you just said. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
I was just going to say that it's been clear to me, especially watching the Housing Opportunities Commission work in Aspen Court, that the county invests in the housing affordability in a number of different ways, according to what's suitable at the time. And there's actually a fair amount of county investment then, in affordable housing within the city, so.
Right, and many of those dollars are outside of the community development block grant.
Right, they might not be home dollars, they might--
And they may not be home dollars.
If they're using that, so I don't care if they use the home dollars someplace else, because they're taking the larger pool of funds that they have and using what fits to do the work here. So, I'm good with that.
It sounds like the approximate average over the last five years of monies that have been accessed because we have signed on to the county pool, have been on the order of, an average of $200,000 a year, over and above our CDVG money.
Okay.
I think it's already been moved, seconded.
Any public comment? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was an aye, Josh, right?
Correct.
Okay. You said aye, but the timing here made it sound like it was the time for a nay. We have only one item left on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, or does somebody want to move it?
Move it to the consent agenda.
Second.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes seven, nothing. We're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it. Lost our future poet laureate, though.
I told them it was a consent.